Okay, so the first-
All right, new business, sale of town-owned properties.
Okay, the first one is map 101 lot 18.
All righty. Two, um, a total bid of $300. I would like to bid a total of $300.
Where's the location? It's map 101 lot 18.
Although it's confusing because it says there's $300 to be a number but written out as $200 for lot number 0018 located, but they have provided a check for the 10% in the amount of $30.
In the past, we've used the 10% check.
Right, it's a credit card. It is from Christina Cullen. These, okay.
Cash?
Cash. The next one is a, um, I Jeffrey Estes bid $563 for the lot. Please find a bank check for the amount of $56.30.
For cash?
For cash. For same, same one for-
101?
$56.30.
30?
$56.30.
Yeah, but what about lot number? The first one-
It's the first one.
Map 101 lot 18.
Yes, thank you.
And the price again was $500?
$563.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, the next one is 102 19.
So one bid for map 102 lot 19. And it is, um, a bid amount of $1,357 with a money order enclosed for $135.70 from Andrew Heidemar.
And that's for 101 18?
101 19. Or 102, 102 0019.
And that was for how much again?
$1,357.
Let's get our listening ears on here, guys, come on.
We're discussing whether or not we should be accepting cash or just cash.
Whoa.
All right, so that is all for lot 19. Yes. Next one should be map 102 lot 0045. Oh, I hear more jingle. And the bid for lot 102-0045 is again Jeffrey Estes, a bid of $357, um, and a cash enclosure of $35.70. Right.
This is the notion of what, and while I think it's cumbersome, I think you, somebody brought you $356, you should be accepting it.
The net, okay, folks, let's keep this going. So the next one is, um, a total bid of $400.
Is this on 0045 or 005?
It is on 0045.
Okay.
We're still on 0045, and it is Christina Cullen.
Say that again, since I was moving to the last one.
It is $400 with a deposit enclosed of $40. We're moving right along here. Um, map 102 lot 0051. One bid. What number was that?
51.
Yes, you can order. Great, just go down the list, mark them off, that way you keep yourself on task. And it is Jeffrey Estes for a bid of $127 with a total amount of $12.70 enclosed. It's the change that gets here.
You know, we could make a policy to head around up to the nearest dollars.
I don't even know if that's worth it.
Or you could just ask for a check.
Let's just never be in this position again.
That's right. Okay, map 102 lot 0053, lots 001 and 002. On Times Bank. Jeffrey Estes bid $2,101, and there's an amount enclosed of $210.10. And it is all there. Watch for the diamond out in the corner. Map 102 lot 0068. Two bids. First bid is for a bid of $1,237 with a money order enclosed of $123.70 from Andrew Heidemar. $1,237 and a money order for $123.70. The next one for that lot is for a total bid of $200 with the amount of $20 enclosed by Christina Cullen. All right, map 102 lot 0090. There are two. It's a bid of $100 with a $10 check from Christina Cullen.
Here, if I know the business.
Um, a bid from Jeffrey Estes for a bid of $327 with a check for, or a cash amount of $32.70 enclosed. It's all there. Next one, map 103 lot 0004. Two bidders. A bid amount of $3,057, there's an enclosed money order of $305.70 from Andrew Heidemar. I apologize if I am slandering your name, sir. Next one is a check for the amount of $700 with a $70 check from Christina Heidemar. Sorry, Christina Cullen, you're all starting to run together here.
Two Heidemar, I think against each other?
Yeah. All right. Map 103 lot 008 and 009. All right. Okay, the first one. First one is a check for $800 from Thomas Simpson. So their bid is $8,000 for the combined lots. It says, uh, my, yeah, my bid of $8,000 for both lots, my attempt to prevent anyone from building any more houses on the pond, thank you for your correspondence. The next one is for $3,000 from Dan Broshu with a check for $300 enclosed. The next one is a bid of $1,600 with a check for $160 from Christina Cullen. The next one is a bid from Jeffrey Estes, a bid of $3,127 with $312.70 enclosed. I didn't count that for verifying accuracy of the cash enclosed.
I guess I'm back with some input.
Yeah.
Change for sure. 302? Yep, very good.
All right, very, now has been verified. And the last one is a bid of $3,655 with a check for $365.50 from Patrick and Melissa Lissard.
So Lissard.
Are also on the road.
Buy for that piece of property, just chair.
I believe that's what I read off.
$8,000, $3,000, $1,631, $27, and $3,650.
So the next one is map 103 lot 0049. And there are four bids on this property. The first one is a bid of $1,600 with a check for $160 enclosed from Christina Cullen. The next one is a bid of $6,000 from Dan Broshu with a check of $600 enclosed. The next one's a bid of $127 with $12.70 in cash.
Jeffrey Estes?
Jeffrey Estes, yes, and I have verified that amount. The last one is a bid of $156 with a check for $15.60 from Christine Kennedy and Michael McNeil. Next on the list is map 103 lot 0052. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 people that bid on this parcel. Michael Montero for the amount of $6,001, although the check is for $200, which would only make the bid $2,000 based on the amount, 10% amount. Be nice, John. The next one is a bid of $6,000 from Dan Broshu with a check for $600 enclosed. The next one is a bid of $1,600 with a check for $160 from Christina Cullen. The next one is a bid of $4,001 with a check for $401 from Michael Montero. Oh, I'll bet you this is the other half of this.
So he is at 6,001.
So this gets him-
To where he needs to say that, yeah.
So he is at 6,000.
Probably the high bidder, $1 over.
Christine Kennedy and Michael McNeil for the amount of $1,552 with a check enclosed for $155.20. And the last one to be read.
Was that for lot 0086?
These are all for the same lot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
103 0052.
Um, the, it is from Patrick and Melissa Lissard with a bid of $5,155 and a check for $515.50. All right. The next one is map 104 lot 0086. Okay. William Fisher, a bid of $5,600. With $560 in cash. Glad to see the trust in our town folks is very much alive. The next one is a bid for $600 with a check for $60 from Christina Cullen.
And that's still on 104?
These are all on the same one. I will announce when we are moving on. And the last one is a bid of $2,800. Yes, $2,800 from Dan Broshu with a check for $280 enclosed. That is the last bid for that. The final, um, sealed bid will be for map 261 lot 0016. There are three bidders in total. The first one is Dan Broshu in the amount of $300 with a check for $30 enclosed. Second one is for, from Jeffrey Estes. It is a bid of $127 with $12.70 enclosed. And the last one is from Carrie Gould with a bid of 30, with a amount enclosed of $33, so a bid of $330.
She didn't make it by much. So it asks the board, will prepare a summary? Will prepare a summary of this information and provide a recommendation based on any information we would have at the town hall? Is there any specific information that the board would like to prepare to have a recommendation in awarding these bids?
Dan?
Um, so all lots sold, we have bid on every lot?
Yes.
We have bids on every lot.
It's the board's decision whether they're sold.
Well, the other league recognized the Town Lands Committee, they did a lot of hard work on this, and we should move the properties. We did all the consultancy, we built everything, it's the best interest of the town, I don't, chairman, don't say anything.
I'm, I'm kind of impressed with some of them, what the prices are. I, to me, there's a couple of lots in here that I thought would get even more than that, but-
Have you got, yeah, sorry, come to the microphone, please.
In general, I think some of the, some of the prices, I'm surprised are as high as they are. But counted of that, there's one or two lots in here that I thought would go for significantly more than what I see there, so, but in general, I'd say, yeah, it's, I think the town did all right on this, but I think there's a couple we ought to take a look at and see if it really is that we should let it go at that price.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you could make a recommendation on ones we shouldn't sell for the bid price, that would be helpful.
Right, right. All right.
Thank you.
George?
Just that, I'm just curious to ask who, when the bids come, sorry. I'm just curious when the bids come out for lot 103 0052, on how they're going to handle that, with a $4,000 and a $6,000 bid on that, so I'd be curious how that comes along.
Well, we just add together.
Yeah, so it was a $6,000 bid, it was written that way, the secondary check was just the $400 to make the complete.
So he realized he made a mistake?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's a $6,001.
$1 bid, yes.
All right, we'll have that recommendation ready for the board for the next meeting, and I would anticipate and notify anyway that asks that the board will decide on these next meetings.
And, and we'll review the email that was sent out to the room associations, well.
Yeah, that has no there.
Right, it doesn't look like any of the names are.
Um, I will, I typically do not allow anything into a public comment, but since there are very few people here, and I know you were, you folks were one of the bidders or multiple bidders, please come up to the microphone and ask your question. Yep.
Will need name and address.
Hello?
It's just confusing, I just wanted to ask.
Sir, your name and, your name, your name and address.
Unlock 0052.
Your, your name for the record.
You have to state your name and state your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Dan Broshu.
Okay. And your address, sir?
Uh, 75 Polly Anne Ave, Dover, New Hampshire.
Very good.
I just couldn't quite understand what all the bids were for the 52.
We'd be happy to make that information available publicly after we compile it, so maybe give the town hall a call tomorrow, 664-9007, and we can fill you in.
I, I, I have the amounts listed, I have a bid of $6,001, $6,000, and $1,600.
Oh, okay.
Those were the four.
Thank you, sir.
Was that, thank you.
Well, actually, I think-
51 15.
And 15 52.
Oh, 15 52, yes, sure, correct. Was the 4,001 and the 2,001 combined?
Move, moving on from their financial policies to be reviewed, investment deposit first reading.
Yeah, did anything change in that?
Yes, yeah, so I did, they included the track changes, version first, the investment policy changed, only minor changes, that change a couple of grammar notes, and the original policy reference, specific documents, and we made changes that it's state approval, so we don't have to constantly update attachments.
Good answer, okay.
Actually, on that one there, we probably should elect a going to be thanks for state approval and the NHPPIP, we should have passed out NHPPIP. That is legally allowed, the town has chosen not to use it even though it's a higher interest rate because it's not liable.
Uh, one note that I had on it was on the front. Everything had been changed to prudent person with the exception of the first one, which left as prudent man, and I know Tracy did not want that, so we're not, make sure we're addressing it to the all sections.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of you guys, I gotta tell you. You're, seriously, chief tonight, he's like, you know, whoever you hire, whatever man or woman, and I was like, yes, we're getting somewhere, good answer.
All right, uh, that was, does anyone else have any comments or feedback on it from the first reading? George?
Sorry, he was asking for a list, and I told him it was attached, it was on the list.
Anyone?
No, no comments.
You were, you were.
Okay, I'll bring forward an updated copy for final approval next meeting.
Did, do you folks have anything outside?
Nothing additional.
Deposit policy.
Our courier spelled correctly. Let's see who you are.
This is like courier and I've always, isn't it?
It's very nice, and we're a small town of all, but let's spell correctly in our policies. And this basically was speaking to the fact that we have a courier service through our bank-
Yes.
-that is insured and maybe picking up various deposits.
Does pick up service.
Good, so if we can get rid of courier and I, and spell courier, we'll be fine. When receipts are transferred, it was designated courier service, consideration should be given to the insurance liability for the service.
Are you reading or sharing?
Yeah, so that was the only thing that I, I wanted to be sure of, is that we are always insured even during the transportation process, and other than that, I thought the policy looked fine.
Just a note that I, notes that I had, if we compare to our other policies, we don't use article, we use the one, and then purpose would be bold, application guidelines would all be the bolded items, so you'd have the Roman numeral, and then that would be your bolded item. The other piece that I picked up on is under Article 3 of Guidelines for the Town Clerk's Office, this says, um, all this is, uh, sorry, whether, whether cash check or other form, all that is on hand in excess of $300 must be deposited on a daily basis, the $300 allowances for money from each of the three stations to make changes, change at the start of the following day. Should it really be referenced, just stated that, um, should be stated that there is $100 per station with a maximum of $100 per station in there, that way, whether you have one station, two stations, three stations, it's allocated based on what station is there, not a dollar amount of-
I'll ask the clerk, they use a pool of money to exchange from, so I'm not positive if what they use is $300 as a pool or what they have individually, so I'll make sure that accurately reflects the practice and doesn't specifically state the number of stations.
Yep. Um, so we're moving- So removing the stations piece there. Also, right below that, it says, it references having and not having in excess of $200. So again, kind of, is that the same difference under the tax collector's office?
Just two drawers.
That's why I said, I believe it's $100 per drawer is actually what they want, and would be more appropriately referenced as such. When I'm done, George, then I'll call in.
I understand.
On the second page, it drops to $50 with $100 for recreation. Why not just make it $100 across the board, since that seems to pretty much be the standard? So I'm recommending an increase of, from the 50 to get to 100, which is adequate for making change for every, paying everyone. And then, the last note I had was under Section 3.05, which is regarding the designation of the transfer courier service and making sure that we do not transport in excess of the amount insured. And I just had a question there of how do we insure this?
So anytime the Brosch receipts approach the insured limit, we call and have a second courier run for the day.
Okay.
Typically, that happens when, after tax bills go out, and they monitor that specifically, and our bank does not charge anything additional to have a second courier run, but it's at our discretion to call for.
So do they, do we only send enough deposit to stay below their limit? Just to ensure that we never put more in there?
Never put more in there than is insured, yes.
Okay.
And previously was a part of the policy, and with this approval, next meeting.
George?
My concerns were noted, thank you.
Alright.
Bring back a second reading for review.
Very good. Highway Department and internal billing policy, first read.
I have a couple of...
Please start us off.
Under 2A, I need to understand, when you say $1,000 for non-operating budget activities under $5,000 for operating budget activities, about prior approval? The purpose of this is internal billing to departments that hold their own funds. So how could there be an operating budget activity approved?
So, this would be, for example...
Fire department wants something dug up back there.
Or something moved for a facility at the police department and fire department, something at the town hall.
But they don't have external revenue and funding in their own reserve account, so...
So this is just saying that if work to be done for an operating budget portion of the town is to exceed $5,000...
We're just gonna get $5,000.
The board needs board approval. And the purpose being that if the board wanted to go up to bid, meaning the purchasing policy...
Oh, oh.
For something of that value, the board have the opportunity to...
That number was chose based on the purchasing policy, which we...
Okay, okay, thank you, that's helpful. And then under 3A, the actual hourly rate, I would say 140% of the actual hourly rate, since that's the low end of what benefits actually cost. And, and any hours performed at an overtime rate, build it to 110% of the hourly rate.
Did you say 110%?
140 and 210% for overtime.
Makes sense.
Okay?
Yep.
Those were the only two things that occurred to me.
I had a no in here. So when I, when I read this initially, I was trying to understand who determines the cost or value of this, because when you look at it, if someone's like, eh, it's like 500 bucks, but the reality is, is that when you start looking at all the hours, it may not be $500, it could be $2,000. Or somebody's like, it's 999...
The road agent just to provide the estimates, that's number four.
Prior to performing the services, the road agent will repay, will prepare a cost estimate quota bid upon completion of the services.
I read it, I just didn't process it. I'm ready for that question. Any other comments?
I'm glad that this is in place.
That makes two. There was a conversation earlier in the meeting regarding an external billing policy for situations like putting up the signs where an outside organization has offered to pay the town for the services. Is, I don't know how frequently something like that happens, the Isaac Vosker group offering to pay the highway department for installation. Usually, if you say no, it's the road crews.
Well, it came to my attention in various online forums, that have been a couple of projects completed for some village water district, swing flight association. So I think it's important that you create this policy before you hire a road agent, so that in the future, as external entities are asking, we're a small town, and I absolutely appreciate the kind-heartedness in doing things, but I think we've come to understand that that's not how we can function and still get done a variety of other tasks. So I would just suggest that a consideration be given to creating some type of external work policy. And I'm not saying that there isn't times where maybe it's necessary to do that work, or that it's the right thing to do, or whatever, I just think there should be a policy.
Dan?
I was a bit of a new business and stuff, with external billing. There's a lot of culprits in town, or in our road agents and stuff. I feel if someone went and get a building permit, a driveway permit, paid install everybody inspected, then if it needs to be replaced, it's gonna be an expense, but we replace it after you withdraw the protocol, the first time, it's in the right of way. People have not done anything, we give them the opportunity to get it installed to the town's standards. If they don't, we do it, we build it. We give them like three months, Dover does it all the time, they give a certain town limit to get it done, if not, they'll do it and they'll bill you.
Rick, I believe you would like to say something, like jumping out of the chair over there?
I would, I would just encourage you to, I looked the policy over, and I apologize and that's to meet with John and Connor both, I don't, not meaning to blindside anybody. I think it ought to be a department-wide policy, a townwide policy, not just earmarked to recreation and conservation. I think it serves a couple of purposes, and I'll bring up the cemetery. There are times when we have asked the highway fund to do projects for us, and I think it's perfectly reasonably meet with the road agent, and if the road agent said, yeah, we can sneak that project in at the end of the season, and it's X number of dollars. I get the whole thing of it's money swapping money, but in theory, you know, whatever, either consider the cemetery budget, or it could be transferred over to the highway fund and budget, and perhaps allow them a little extra money to finish a project up or something. But more importantly, it doesn't, I think if you, I think the way you have it written, if it's under $1,000, the road agent can decide to do it over that. It's, you know, I think that if it was made a townwide policy, I don't think you're signaling anybody else. You certainly still have the ability that the cemetery trustees could come forward to you folks and say, would you waive that requirement? You have the right to do that or not?
I would just like to clarify that it is not money swapping money from cemetery into the transfer, it would go to the general fund, it's on anticipated revenue and accounted for that, just to, because I don't want people to...
And there's two sides to look into that, too, is that if the cemetery didn't use highway fund, that we could be taking money away from a vendor in town that pays taxes, and I certainly appreciate that side of it. But I'm looking at it more from the fact that if we're gonna institute a policy, it should be, that policy should be for everybody, and not just one.
Thank you.
Yes, two points. First, to answer Tracy, the water district would be covered under non-operating budget activities.
Okay.
So that's where the, it's a, ERA recognizes it as a governmental agency, and so consequently, that's where that is. To refer it to Rick, it really would depend upon which pocket you're taking the cemetery money out of. If you were taking it out of trustee of the trust fund money, then it is under the $1,000. If it's coming out of your operating budget, it's at the $5,000. And the reason being that it's just moving money around within the bottom line of the selectman's budget. But if it's coming out of the trust, then you're at the $1,000.
George?
Yeah, my comment is that the purpose is already covered, and the front chief covers all the departments and the whole town. That was already covered.
Okay. Alright, any other comments on this? Moving on.
This will be back for final review at the next meeting.
Next item on the list is highway department, or sorry, is fire department line adjustment, and everyone should have received a memo from Lynn, looking at moving $39,200 from the part-time hourly line, which is line 0042220-01-4112, to line, to the responder stipend line, which is last four digits, 4121, all the precursor numbers are the same.
And that there is a renaming of that line, 4121, to responder ones?
Yes, that was the last part of that. I was just trying to get through the numbering part. So I just had a question on, before doing that, why, what's the purpose of renaming it? Why rename it? Just because we changed away from the stipend to...
It's an appropriate choice based on the compensation structure that they...
Kind of fun with that. Connor, would you have anything you would like to add?
Nothing additional, thank you.
I'll accept a motion.
Alright. Roll call vote?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving right on here, deliberative session date. Connor, would you like to speak to this?
The board needs to formally set the date for deliberative session. Historically, it's been the first Saturday in February. The school board has formally set their deliberative session to the second Saturday, which is their historical date. So we'd be looking for a vote to set deliberative session, the first session to February 1st, Saturday.
I will make a motion to set deliberative session to the first Saturday of the month, which is February 1st.
Right, second now.
Now, aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright. The road agent hiring process, Connor, would you like to talk about that?
So we've had this position advertised since the last meeting, collecting applications. We'll continue collecting applications throughout the whole process. The initial resume review will begin on the 13th, and again, this position was advertised open until filled. And so it's just, I'd like to give the board, the board, the opportunity to offer input regarding the hiring process.
What day did you say that review's gonna be?
Monday, May 13th.
Okay. How many applicants have you received?
We've received multiple applicants.
We can discuss it non-public.
And when you, when you say you're going to restart reviewing them on May 13th, are we looking to just have us drop in, look at the applications, or are you looking to post it as a meeting?
If the board would like me and working with John and administration to review the applicants and bring forward the board a recommendation, be happy to do that. If the board would like to review all applicants that come in, can do that if the board wants, and what we would say would be the top three, just giving the board an opportunity to decide how they'd like to be involved.
I'd like to review all of them. How's everyone else doing?
Good idea.
Okay. I'll leave it to that.
What I would suggest, then, is that on the meeting for the 20th, Connor could make a photocopy of all of their resumes, that, and the scoring, which we get through indeed for those that have it. And then the board at that meeting would receive those in non-public, so you're sworn to confidentiality. And then, the board could decide how they want to proceed as far as, it's gonna, as with any application process, there's gonna be a bunch that can be easily eliminated. And then you can decide how you're gonna proceed with those that are left in the...
Sure. When you do that, can I just ask you if there's any order of your ranking?
Yes, be happy to do that, that's kind of what we're looking for.
Can I comment on that? So would you wanna have like 6 o'clock non-public before the meeting? Or after?
It's not a terrible idea, because it's gonna be a really long meeting.
I might wanna make it 5:30.
Alright, 5:30, what? Would that be better?
I can't get here at 5:30.
Yeah, I'm already giving up, like, tonight I did not have any quality, I did not have any time at home with my family, so I appreciate everyone's willingness to do that, but I'm asking that we not do that, 'cause I've been giving up a significant amount of family time lately.
So, then, let's push it at the end of the meeting for you, and we should go home and have a normal dinner with your tribe.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I would prefer that we do this at 6:30.
Do it at the end, not at the beginning.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we do that, as opposed to regular meeting, but we put out in timely manners, people know that we'll be non-public till 7:00.
No, no.
No. Let's just do it at the end.
At the end? Yes. I'd rather just suck it up and muscle through.
And if you really, and if it really goes too long, then you can just say, well, we'll have an end of the meeting or something.
Call it quits for the night and rehash it.
Yeah. My experience has been after 10 o'clock, it's really...
Can I turn into a pumpkin?
I am, grab a bone in the truck, don't worry.
Dan.
Put a little water on it.
Alright. Put a packet together for the board and an in-priority list for the non-public in the meeting on the 20th.
Thank you. Select persons' reports and concerns. George?
I asked for a comment from you. Do business earlier in the beginning.
Oh, I missed that.
Please, that's alright, sir. All I wanna do is, I wanna express my thanks to John Huckins, when it concerns the project that just came up on Isaac Turn Road, this individual that didn't show here tonight, and just sticking with town policy, and making sure that it goes through, the prior board's notice, I appreciate that. Thank you, John.
I was intending to, I know Rick had some comments on that, I was going to circle back to that after the select persons' reports. If everyone is amenable to, I'll move it to the front, since we're talking about it right now. Alright. Rick, would you like to comment? Three minutes.
Well, I spoke to the individual a couple of times today, Mr. Sander, and he, much like the paperwork you folks have gotten, expressed his frustration in having to do that. We had a very productive conversation, I kind of explained the town's position and what I believe the prior board was looking for, which was in fact protecting the town's investment of Ayers Cove Drive. And I think he, I think he was receptive to what I was trying to articulate to him. He indicated to me that he had received his building permit, and then the town came back and made these conditions, and I explained to him that that wasn't the case, that the public hearing was, in fact, happened before the issuance of building permit, and that's why that was in place. And he said, okay, he said, it was a couple of years ago. So he specifically, and I believe spoke to Connor early in the day, and felt that they weren't gonna be able to come up tonight to have the meeting. And so I went out and looked at it, and based on the minutes of the previous meeting, I took the liberty of interpreting what I believe the board at that time was looking to do, which was in fact protect the town's investment. And so I'm gonna go out there tomorrow and make a recommendation to him on what I'm looking for, so that he can move forward with his building permit. He asked me to put two things forward to you folks, or I offered to, for, I offered them for him. One is, he wanted to know if there was any chance that if he came to the next meeting to stay... to state his case, would the board reconsider a decision of a previous board? The other issue, and I told him, I said, no, I have no idea. And the other thing was, is if he, based on tomorrow, if, it sounds to me like, for whatever reason, he wants to try to get a CO sooner rather than later. If, if once I give him direction on what I need him to do on the end of that road, he gets a contract with a written quote, and let's just assume that they're gonna come in and do the job, but they can't get here for three weeks or a month or whatever, would the town, would the board selectively consider allowing him to bond that amount of money so that he could get his CO knowing full well that the bond, that he would lose the bond to the town? So again, I bring that up, I know this is public comment, I know that you folks typically don't like to make decisions in the eleventh hour. I was on the phone with the buyer, was late getting here, and I says, I'll bring him up and I'll call him back tomorrow with whatever your decision is.
And I agree with the previous board because we're gonna go in there, overlay the whole section, Air's Cove.
It's done.
They did that today?
Yep.
So now we have an investment already? So I would really, we need the agreement. We have the bond, it's up, whatever.
Other conversations, George?
In the past, when, now I know this is done with the board of selectmen, but in the past, the CBA has granted similar items to which the chief is discussing here, and people have walked out. They didn't have a bond, that was the only difference. They have walked off and said, well, you gave me a leeway, so I, I think that either a bond or have to work on one way or the other. But the bond has to be there prior to the issue itself still, that's how I feel.
I'm of the mindset that the bond needs to be the bond plus ten or twenty percent because, just because you got somebody to give you a quote does not mean that will be the actual number that the town would have to pay. So if the certificate of occupancy is that important, I would say the quote plus twenty percent or something.
And do you limit it to one quote, or do you make them get a couple just to validate that, that way you're not, you're not getting? I mean, we do the, we do the same thing here in the town and I do the same thing at work. I don't just go with one quote, I get multiple quotes.
Well, I would assume either a binding contract in which whoever made the quote was committed to doing it.
Yeah, right. I agree, more than just a quote.
I'd be shocked if in a timely manner, quote can be prepared given today's, you know...
Yeah, I guess I could back that up. I guess the conversation that I had with him was an indication that he would have the signed quote or a signed estimate or something from the, and it may well be that. Again, I'm offering that suggestion, he may, he may ultimately decide not to, should you approve it, he may decide not to do that, anyway, he may just go ahead and get the work done and then get his CO after. I'm just trying to, as I said, him, offer a couple suggestions up so that perhaps you could give him some guidance, so he doesn't have to wait two weeks to come and get this exact guidance. But if you're not comfortable making the decision, I respect that.
Well, they paid it today, so the edge is for right now, so the town made investments, we need to protect the town's investment.
Need to get done quickly.
I think the intention is that we'll put some gravel, they'll, like we do everywhere else anyway, so whether they'll, I can get them to, ask them to do that tomorrow, whether, they've been working up in the second county road area anyway, some dead gravel, and so we'll get that taken care of with gravel tomorrow, lots of it does save the road.
John?
Let me round up a second. During the winter, we have a lot of times where they can't do pavement in the highway. Our actually already has a set fee that they figure that it's gonna cost for that sixteen feet end. I'm not sure if you know what that is off the top of your head, but I know they have an amount 'cause they do it on a regular basis when they can't pave in the winter. So if they bond the same amount for that like they would on the driveway, to me, they met the intent of what the town's trying to do, protect their road edge.
Is that sixteen feet, sounds short for...
Sixteen feet is the distance end, just so it doesn't break up the, they drive on that before they get to the road, so that breaks, the edge is breaking off on them inside the road edge.
This is a unique situation, and what John's talking about is a typical driveway, so it's like the curb apron's in and they go sixteen feet, and it's a ten-foot pole because that's a typical one cog driveway.
Right.
We're talking about, this board made the decision to have this individual pave the end of a private road, which is, which is kinda unique in itself. It serves absolutely no purpose to take a sixteen-foot to follow a driveway requirement of a twelve, a twelve foot, I mean a ten-foot pole, because that road is, that actual, that apron is thirty feet wide.
Right.
My, in taking my interpretation of minutes of that meeting, so the road agent, at the road agent's discretion, or you'll, you'll take direction from the road agent, my position is just to take a ten-foot pole and run parallel to our road for that twenty-five feet. So it'll be, the apron will be above ten feet or whatever a regular paved vehicle is, but it'll cover the entire area of our stretch of road that we're looking to cover. I don't, it doesn't, I don't have a real care what happens down in Isaac's Turn. I'm more concerned on making sure that we protect our road edge, and by having them run parallel through that, we're gonna accomplish what I believe that board is looking to do.
Dan?
I agree with the chief, or in turn, but because if you think about that, that's probably on the edge of the easement. That ten feet, but little road, twelve-foot road plus ten feet, we're on the edge of the easement, so that's our property line anyway.
Okay, George?
Just as a reminder that back in two thousand three or four, we brought this together, we brought this up for the road agreement, you was involved with it, you was involved, and myself was involved in why we were doing it, and was there to also to protect fire safety and everything else that was involved in it. So that's, that's the reason why the intent that comes from the past board was part of the, I don't know, what we had voted for and had approved for the policy of building a house on the class six road.
But if you go back to, this is a unique situation in the fact that the road agent, Peter Cook, gave recommendations for that individual to do on Isaac's Turn in relation to where he built this house, which did fall within our class six road agreement. This, the issue we're talking about right here was a requirement of the board that was put forth in the public session, was not a recommendation of the road agent, it was a recommendation of two members of the board, one being Casey O'Brien and the other being Fred.
Lucier. So how would the, how would the board like to proceed with this regarding any of the recommendations like you spoke for?
I agree with Rick, and like I tell you, if I, ten feet added there, give it edge of the easement anyway, and now check all our property.
Okay. Now what about the bonding side of it?
We just spent money today and we have to guarantee the investment for the town that gets done.
So does that mean that the board agrees with bonding it and allowing the person to have a CO, or John, how do you feel about that?
I have no issue with that, it's just that the town has to pay attention to make sure it gets done. If it doesn't, then use the money before you do get damage to the road.
Sure. So I would say bond, the estimate plus twenty percent just to go with a thirty-day completion?
Right. And I think, I think the, he'll just get it done. There will be someone in, he'll get it done.
Yeah.
Oh, if you, if you agree to it, I'll, I'll reach out to the, the town engineer tomorrow to make sure that, I believe they're putting down two and a half inches of pavement and it'd be my, you know, I'll, I'll go off what the engineer says as far as I'll, we'll pull that, we'll do that thirty-foot pole, eight or ten feet wide, whatever the width of the machine is, and I'll just make sure with the engineer that the depth of the material is, that the depth of the hot top is consistent with what we already have there, so we don't have a drop seam. And so that's as long as, it's just really down to what you folks are comfortable with.
I'll tape it away and then two and a half inches compacted.
So estimate plus twenty percent, just in case something went wrong?
And thirty-day completion?
I don't know if thirty days is, has everybody scheduled that right now? I would say a sixty-day completion.
I think, and I think the only thing that he would be interested in the bond is if he can't get somebody to do it fairly quick.
Right.
That's what I think his intention, thought of him was, done it thoroughly.
Now, just for my own clarity, see, Connor, John, maybe you can help me out with the bond? Could, when you do the bonded amount, I know the bonded amount is a portion of what the actual cost is to, it's like an insurance.
Well, yeah, it, I expect what he'll do is, we come up with a number and he's gonna put that cash into the treasury, the treasury will hold it, the town projects, fully, I don't anticipate a real bond.
Right.
I anticipate cash plus twenty percent.
Yep. All right, I just wanted to make sure I was processing.
It's a good option if they really need to move quickly, so.
My guess is they'd probably need a CO from an insurance end, like to have your house insured, that's usually required.
That's probably...
Or a mortgage.
Yeah, or a mortgage.
You built that in the design too, so.
Couple of years, two, three years. Okay?
Thank you, Paul.
So the board is in consensus with that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, select persons' reports and concerns. Dan?
Oh, like all kinds of concerns.
All right.
Well, last week, I went to the conservation, and we talked about, we got signed on the river, and there's a sort of, nothing on for the plane award. And then I attended Saturday, Town Lands Committee, they wanna set up a regular schedule every Saturday, and so, and then we talked about, John Wallace has a lot of information on PDFs, whatever, all this stuff. And I think he's, get a thumb drive, so Town Lands Committee have us, they look at all the deeds and conservation, so all the, everything's in there. So we're not limited to someone's computer, wherever we go, we mail, whatever we need.
Okay. George?
Was that a request that the town gather that information, or is the lands committee gonna work with John Wallace to get that information?
John Wallace volunteered and stuff, so.
Okay, oh, good, thank you.
So the chairman's gonna get John, John Wallace and stuff. We'll keep you updated.
George?
No, listen, I have nothing to put, Connor brought up what I had, so that's why I'm all done.
Connor?
We, we have a zoning board meeting on the fifteenth, and I believe there's two cases.
Three.
Three, okay, three cases. I just got it tonight, so.
There's not been a regurgitation commission meeting between my last report out and out, and tomorrow night is the state board meeting. It remains to be seen if I can actually attend it, do the little work and straight, and I work on it.
Well, 'cause why I say that, we have a cemetery meeting tomorrow night, so I have my choice which to go to.
I told you we needed her at the cemetery meeting.
That's important.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of...
Well, I can at least go for the board meeting and then make...
Pretty much all an hour. They're pretty, pretty solid.
As far as more than the last...
It's at the administrative, yeah, say U Building, and it's over by now. Right?
So then the next one will be mine.
So, yes. Planning, or planning board is tomorrow night. I've asked Dan to attend for me, I have a work conflict, so I will be in the office unfortunately most of the night tomorrow night. Above and beyond that, I did have a comment or a concern that I wanted to bring up, and I will be, and I've already talked about it, with Connor is around, when we have paving done, that there are no side projects or works, work that contractors are doing, doing as an aside when they are doing town projects, and specifically it was in reference to some work that they had done for the hatches.
And we paid for it.
You may have paid for it, my only concern on it is, one, that it's, it is poor optics from the standpoint that you are a select person, your family works for the town, and here they are performing work for your property, even though I understand that you did, that you paid for it. You know, I don't know, things that I don't know and I don't know so...
And it isn't billed on the town's bills at all, it's a separate invoice to them.
I'm, I'm not saying it's not, I don't know how it's billed out, I don't know any of that, and I don't need to. I'm just saying I, it, it looks poorly, and I know this, there was an issue with this years ago with...
Lowest Lane.
Lowest Lane. Yeah. With Lowest Lane, and I know it's not the same scenario, they were done, they're different, but from an optical end, it, it doesn't look well for the board to be having something like that, and I ask that everybody please be cognizant of that. And also that our policies reflect that we don't perform, that we ask our contractors not to perform side work while...
I never saw that policy. Will you show it to me, please?
It's not a policy, I'm asking that it be put into our policy.
Because, just because I'm a selectman and I serve on boards, I don't give up my right as a resident.
You're right, nobody's asking you to give up your right as a resident. The conversation is around the fact that it, it appears poorly that there is work being performed for a select person, by the same contractor that is doing work for the town at the exact same time, which, like I said, I don't know what, what your price was on or anything, I don't know if they held the line for what they did for the town or how else it was done, and I don't, that's not, I don't care about that, it's not my take, I'm just telling you the optics of it look poor, and I'm asking that we all be cognizant of that. Tracy?
I would think that if we have work that needed to be performed at our homes, that we could contract as we see fit as long as the contract was prior to anything signed by the town.
I would agree with that statement if that was completely accurate.
I'm just simply stating...
Prior to being signed by the town.
Then our, what, what we had down, actually, if you wanna get down to the nitty-gritty, it's actually the flare. And the reason that we had it done at our expense, the town's trucks come up in there, drop salt, drop sand, get it out, if they need someone there up that end of town. So it isn't just hatches trucks that are going in and out of it.
I understand that. It's, my whole conversation was around the fact that it is, they were doing work for the town in the same area and they did work for your property. I understand it wasn't billed that way, I understand we don't have a policy on it currently. It's, it's, it's just an optics view more than it is anything.
Well, you know, there comes a time when you start treating people, I don't think the hatches, any one of them, has ever got one blessed thing but nothing for this town. Whatever we've done, we paid for. Now this guy here that's having the flare done on Air's Cove, I'd be interested, no, I wouldn't, 'cause I don't care. But we paid for ours, and they were done with the town when they did ours because they had reached an area of stopping that they didn't wanna open something up and start grinding in another area. So that's why they did that. And as I say, I could show you the bill, but I won't because it's my business.
You're right, I have no business seeing it. As I said, it's not a, it's not a jabber here or anything, Connor, it's just, it's a, it's a perception.
I've been waiting for this for a week. Ask Connor.
Then he prepared you, 'cause I expressed my...
No, he didn't, no, he didn't. I just merely said, we, he didn't prepare me for anything. Because I don't spend my time in the town hall all the time.
So I think getting a contract, getting a contract in place prior to any town contract alleviates any of this discussion.
Absolutely. Dan?
It's very simple, so every time I've gone and worked for the town in the years past, who, if I had a contract with someone, or who wins the contract, they cannot do any work till their agreement with the town is complete. Once it's, they, they do any work they wanna do, once they fulfill the original contract, it's that whole thing, on state jobs and town jobs I've worked in the past. So we won the contract for town, we weren't just doing work till after fulfill their obligation. our obligation.
So does anyone object to my conversation with Connor about just making sure that it is spelled out in any bid requests that go out, that we clarify that any side work that anyone's doing is not done until after? Trying to think, how did, Connor had a way in which wording it that I thought was appropriate.
I suggested that was the intent, that, you know, the language, we developed the language at the time, but if that was the intent, then saying something like the town, I might have to go back. But the way Dan put it about going to work until the work for the town is done, if that's what the board wants to do, that would be a way to prevent it.
George?
In my case, an honor for me to have mine done, they were one of the companies that was recommended and we just decided not to do it. But what's going to happen with the policy that's being proposed if the individual that says just two houses down the street from me went to contract that we had and says, look, if you have any extra material, if you have extra time, turn around and how much we charge to do my driveway? If we put that policy in effect, that's taking business away from the other person. I don't, I don't, I think just bringing it up amongst the five of us should be enough and then let it go with that. You wouldn't want to have anything in it that hinders the other bids.
Other point?
Because if they have, if they're coming in here, they're going to do X amount of miles of road for us, they allow so many days to do it, and then they have seven of the driveways that they're going to do either before or after they finish, whichever way in their planning goes, you're going to prohibit them from doing that work until they finish the town work.
And there was no, any extra hot top or anything left? We bought by the time the hot top went on that flare that belongs to the town and we paid for it. And I wouldn't allow the town to pay for it if you gave me the money right on this table and said, here, that's to pay that flare. Well, no, you'll never live long enough to pay for a flare on a hatch property.
I appreciate all of your honesty and integrity, Donna. Like I said, this isn't, this isn't directed at you in any way, shape or form.
Funny, the name Hatch came right up there.
Because what it's directed at is the way people perceive it in place someone else may perceive it. And I'm just trying to bring some clarity to it with the board.
Well, the only clarity to it is, we asked them if, while they were in the area, could we hire them to do the flare down approximately 15 feet so that when a truck comes up out of there, which anybody, if they know, they know so much about my property now, they must note that's quite a slope, that it allows a truck to have all six tires on hot top rather than on pot on gravel and pot on, and like I say, but I've been waiting for this because we've been through it before. We go through it all the time on the salted sand that the town owns up there. Yeah, Ken Graham. And so this is something that all my life in this beloved town, that I've been involved. Thank God you're dead, Doug, and you're out of it. But I have always done what I've done above board and I don't care who knows it or who thinks they know more about my business than I do. Good luck. But I know what I do. And like I say, I never screwed the town out of anything yet and the town's not going to screw me.
No, I don't think anybody's after that.
I think this is interesting. We're 9:35 and we also have a non-public.
Dan?
It's very simple. Look at the state, other towns, and it clearly states in there, it's always, I have agreements and stuff. I didn't do any work until I fulfilled my obligations first. So we're not limiting anyone and stuff. But would you sign, once I, my corporation goes and agree with us, I got to stay on that job once that's down, then I can do other stuff, fulfill my obligations.
Our obligation, we wanted to work at that.
I'm hoping to do whatever.
I think that, Mr. Chairman, I think that if you consider just notifying the five of us that if we have other contractors doing business in town, that we allow them to finish the town business before they work for us.
Right.
Just for the five of us, that'd be enough, that it doesn't affect them from doing work for the town at the same time they go over there on Saturday, the same piece of equipment, do a 200-foot driveway, then bring the equipment back, or they have state stays.
They're using our water because we told them to, rather than go haul from everywhere else. They park all their equipment on our property because we told them they had to park anywhere they want, as long as they're up there, park where you want. So I mean, I don't think that whoever my beloved neighbors are that have got so much to know about my business, you know, you cross a line and it's coming close.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on. Sorry about that.
It's okay. I don't know where you have this going, so there you go.
Doesn't matter. It's five miles out of Rochester and I wish it was in Rochester.
Oh, goodness. Okay, moving on, please.
What's next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda is public comment.
We just had that.
Sorry. Why do I have this?
That was part of the information provided.
Okay, don't have to cover that. Why do I have this?
That was part of the information provided in the report. That was notification sent to a property owner and copied to the town. It's in the, it's in my report, listed the first one as at TurboCam and the second one as Major Walter.
So at the beginning of this meeting, you requested we go into non-public purpose of reputation and personnel. Do we still need that?
And Dan requested land.
No, if need be.
No, okay.
Personnel and reputation.
I'll second that.
Dan, I, there I am.
All right, go on. All right.
Okay. Fast and furious, oh please.